Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, May 28th. Town council meeting, the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. Before we move on, the sewer commission meeting has been canceled. And John, will you lead us in prayer?
Rice, please. On my heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening as your humble servants. We ask that you watch over these proceedings and bless us with your divine guidance and your unparalleled wisdom. Help this council to always engage in meaningful discussion and remind us to be thoughtful and compassionate in our decisions. As the choices we make and the actions we take affect the lives and the well-being of others. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Choose. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Luchardi?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Here.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Ordinance 2019-2, second reading sponsored by Council President Goslin. In ordinance amending Chapter 10, Licenses and Business Regulations, Article 5 Hawkers and Peddlers of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Moving second. Al?
Second reading. This is, the state has taken over control of the, used to be food trucks down there, mobile food establishments. And this just brings our, we have to have our ordinances in compliance with the state's regulation by July 1st. And this brings the ordinance into compliance.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on that? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ordinance 2019-3, first reading sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson. In ordinance amending Chapter 8 Garbage and Trash, Article 7 Rules and Regulation for Collection and Disposal of Rubbish, Section 8-105 A and C, code of ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the resolution?
A second.
Moving second. Discussion?
I want to ask Nicole too.
You want me to explain?
Yes.
Okay. Nicole Knott, Solid Waste Recycling Coordinator. So we came into this situation, everyone knows that I'm now tagging contaminated recycling bins. And along with that, there is an ordinance that we, I am allowed to fine if residents continue to have contaminated bins that can cause a rejected load. And along with that, if they continue to do that and you, about four times, we can then remove the bins from the property.
At what point do you find? Do you, after two, after three?
So I'll tag with the orange sticker the first time, and that's just general. I log every time I tag it that goes into my spreadsheet. The second time I go around.
Just, alright, so when you, just so I understand this.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, you're going out there, you have something in there that's not supposed to be in there.
Right.
You put an orange sticker on it.
Yes. And the, and a hang tag of exactly what should be in it. And what they have.
But shouldn't it be in it?
Right. I usually write it out.
Is this random, Nicole? Or you're just like stopping and picking the bin?
I go, I go out as soon as I can for the route of that day for the recycling weeks. So today I was doing Monday's row, because we're delayed a day. And yes, I drive around. Usually, I don't stop on a street and lift all the bins. These are bins that I can see.
Obvious.
Yeah. If I, if I've visited a resident a couple times, I will go and then I might open.
The plastic bag hangs out?
Plastic bags hang out. Things, usually when people are putting things in plastic bags, it makes it voluminous. The covers usually are open. But I'll see little tags and I will stop and open. And at that point, then yeah, I'll open, you know, maybe the three or four that while I'm out there.
But you will also operate under the, if you've gotten a rejection previously, you will, you will go back to that particular resident as well?
Yes. So, second time a rejection, if I, once I'm logging in, I say, ooh, I did that address again, they get an actual notice of violation written in the mail with the ordinance, the recycling ordinance stating that you've had a continued recycling error. Please fix it by your next recycling pickup, or you are subject to fine. So I'm not ticketing them at that point.
But it's not being picked up either?
It is. It is. But it's up to me now. I'm, I'm logging that specific address to go back and make sure that they have no problems. And honestly, usually that works. They get it, they'll call me, they fix it. I'll check it a few weeks in a row and they get it. If, if.
Are you, I don't need to keep stopping. I just want to make sure, because as people call us. So a second time, you give the, basically the written warning?
Yes.
Are you requesting them to call you? Or do they just randomly?
Well, on the hang tag has my number.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and then my, my name is on the notice of violation. Yeah. So at that point, right. So what's happened is I came across a particular address that just was continually having issues. So at the point that I went to make the notice of violation, it came across that they were a condo. They were listed as a condo. Well, by ordinance, we do not pick up condos. However, it's a four-unit. And so I, instead of sending a letter of notice of violation saying that, you know, fix your recycling, now was the opportunity to say, well, you're a condo. We shouldn't have ever had these bins delivered to begin with. So my, my point at that, at that juncture was to remove the bins completely, because they were a condo. And then this came into an issue with, it's a four-unit though. They did receive the bins by the town, have been receiving recycling and trash all this time. And there are four other areas, four other addresses in town that are also condos, but are four-unit or two-unit condos that are receiving trash and recycling. So when we took a look at that, and that's when we thought, you know, maybe instead of condos that have an actual association is one thing. But when you've got a two-unit condo, do we really need to have them as part of the condo exclusive?
We already exclude four-unit apartment houses.
Right.
All less.
Right. So we, we pick up for four-unit apartments. So I, I received a phone call because it's in my ward. And I talked to Nicole. Nicole talked about perhaps the recycling job not being what it should be, and that's a different topic altogether.
Right. Right.
Nicole issued a letter under the assumption that it was a condo and excluded to them saying that trash would no longer be picked up after May 5th. I don't know what the date was.
Right. I gave them four weeks.
Correct. You did. Yes. So I had several conversations with the owners of the condo, again, four-unit condo, which I never even knew existed. It's on Prospect Hill Avenue. I talked to Nicole. And the owners had also gone to the tax assessor, the building inspector. So it's sort of opened up a can of worms. What I asked Nicole to do is to quarterback it and find out what if any other units in town have the same situation. She came up with four in total, I believe.
Yes.
When we looked at it, we pick up for four-unit apartments. It seemed to make sense to me that we, since we were already picking up for these units, that we also continue to pick up for these four-unit condos or.
Correct.
Four condo units or less.
Right.
And that is what the ordinance in front of you, that Al, Al and Nicole worked to draft that. And that's what that ordinance says.
Basically, what the ordinance says is four units of less regardless of type of ownership. Apartment, condo.
Correct.
Whatever type of ownership. Four units or less, we pick up.
And we have been. We have been. We gave them the bins. We have been picking them up. I don't think we understood they were condos or labeled as condos. They don't look like condos.
No, it's like an exception to the norm.
That's correct. So we, we believe that what the taxpayers were asking for was reasonable. Again, the issue of complying with recycling rules is a different story.
Correct.
We'll get to that. But this ordinance actually will allow trash to be picked up as they offer any private residence.
For these four specific.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public on this matter? Just come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Anna Spodnick, Carpenter Court. We just went through a vote for the budget, and I think the town made it clear that we want to start cutting expenses. Instead of making this etched in stone that we're going to continue this expense, because from other states that I've been to, four units do not get public trash disposal. Two units are usually the maximum. We need to start cutting back, not reassuring that we continue expenses. How about we relook and revisit who really should be getting public trash pickup? These, these investment properties, these condos, these co-ops, they're businesses. So if we're denying our businesses trash pickup, why are we denying investments? I mean, the investment companies that are doing these condominiums, they're renting them out more times than, than not, unfortunately. So it doesn't make any sense that we etch it in stone that, yes, we're going to continue to pick up these, these condos. We made a mistake. I would look into that. Like, why is it nobody knew that these were condos and that they shouldn't have been serviced to begin with? So are we covering our tracks on a mistake by changing an ordinance?
Can I ask a question based on that of the solicitor? So, I mean, she said it was a business, but technically, isn't it homeowner who's a part of an association? It's not really, it's not really a business?
No.
Okay.
A condo is a condominium apartment. The only difference is the type of ownership.
But I just want to clarify, it is not a business.
No. I own my condo.
Correct. Okay.
But you pay HOA fees, correct? Do you pay HOA fees to your condo?
Some homes pay HOA fees. That's, that's, got nothing to do with the type of ownership. I own my condo. I own my individual house.
I still think we should be revisiting how many units we should be servicing as far as trash goes. I think four units, you know, is, is a bit much. Other, when I moved into West Warwick, we have a three-apartment house at the top of the street. They had their own dumpster. Worked out fine. Now we have garbage pails all over the place. It's a little narrow street. We, we've stretched ourselves too far, which is why we're broke. This town needs to start deducting, not continuously supporting more expenses. It's just a taxpayer's view.
I'm not getting into the number, whether it should be two or it should be four. That's not my task. It's yours. My point in my, in the ordinance I drafted is it has always been. It has always been four. And all we did was we said, if it's four for an apartment, it should be four across the board. Whether it's four or two, you know, that, that's not what I was asked to do. I just, and I think that if the council makes any changes, they're going to make changes universally. We had an ordinance that was, was not properly drafted.
Thank you. Ms.?
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Carrie Izzy. And I live at 103 Prospect Hill Avenue. And I lived there for 17 years. It is a four-unit complex. After the 17 years, I did rent it out. Now, those first, like, maybe sixteen, no, I'm sorry, 14 years or so, we did have a big trash in our yard. Yeah. It was a dumpster. And we, everything would just go in the dumpster. Now, the Department of Public Works contacted us and said, you know, would you be on board with joining us for trash recycling? That way, you know, it's, you know, you guys are taxpayers, so it would be in your benefit to do so. So eventually, we went on board with that.
What year was that?
I would say, I mean, like I said, we, we had it for a long time, the big dumpster. I would say it was probably sometime in 2000, we're at 19 now, maybe 16? Is my estimation. And it went beautifully. When we went on to that with Department of Public Works, it was great. We were able to recycle and put our trash. And again, it's four units, so sometimes, you know, the bins, the blue bins don't even get taken all the time because they don't fill them. And being, being such a small unit, it's eight bins total for each, you know, two for each unit. And then we got this letter in the mail, and I was reading it. And it stated that, you know, no, no condominium of more than four occupied, which we are only four. And then it stated, and it went into, I went into read it more, and except for home occupations provided for in S 5617 of the West Warwick zoning code, those, those particular condos would not be eligible. And those were more like business-related, you know.
Do you have condo fees?
We do. Yes. We, we pay condo fees. Yes. So when I read into this letter, and I know I made a copy for you, it didn't really make sense because it was, we were meeting all the guidelines. So it was a little confusing to me.
So that kicked off the, the review and.
Yes.
It is a larger issue in question, and may be very valid, should it be two or four. But we believe, after discussing it, we believe that these particular four units were being penalized.
Oh, I agree with you.
And, and so that can be a larger discussion, but they shouldn't be penalized at this moment, whether it should be two. But that would, I, as Mr. DeFiori said, would have to be across the board. Yes.
And as an owner.
So that, that may be a larger discussion. This ordinance actually just takes care of those four units across the town and puts them in line with everyone else, with the four, four-unit apartments. That may be a very valid question, whether it should be two. I don't know the answer to that. We'd have to do some studying and figure out what, what that, what are you saying?
And again, it's not really, like, taking up a lot of space. I mean, I have to tell you, it's, it's much better than having that big, huge bin out where we weren't able to recycle, everything was getting, you have people that want to recycle. You don't give them that opportunity. But this big, huge bin that took up half our driveway. Now we have more room, people to park. So it is a convenience for us to have that, you know. And again, as an owner, I was never notified of any violations that were taking place due to our.
So that's, that's another discussion that will be had.
Yeah. I mean, I've not been notified of anything, so none of my tenants said anything. I received no notification that we were doing any kind of violation. Because that would be taken care of immediately if I was notified.
And we will, we will make sure that you are aware of that.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
I do, I do just want to, one of the things, Mary Beth, that why we wanted to bring it to the table to include these exceptions was because we don't want to lose the recycling to these homes. I think we forget the cost savings through recycling. And we are very similar to many municipalities with the four units and under. And you start cutting out that recycling pickup and solid waste. You're going to end up with a whole lot of tons more in solid waste that's still under, going to be under the municipality cap. So that was one of the things, like, why do we all of a sudden want to take their recycling away from them when, other than this one exception, everything's been, been going very smoothly? And even, I'd want to say, two or three of the other condos really do not have a space for a dumpster. They're, they're basically townhouses. So that, it just would not make sense. But we've got to think about that cost as well. That recycling is really what we want.
So if, I believe in recycling.
Mm-hmm.
However, if, say we didn't pick up, and then everything just gets, and it's not our responsibility anymore, gets put in a dumpster, it's up to the association to have a company come and pick it up. It's coming from West Warwick.
Right.
Do we get any type of penalty if there's a contamination?
No, not at that point. I don't believe.
So how would, how would we lose money?
Because you're not going to get your recycling. It will just go into a dumpster.
It's been thrown away.
It's just going to be solid waste, Jay.
We have a minimum, we have a minimum that we have to collect.
Yeah. And we're under that minimum.
And we're under that minimum, and that's, I think that's why.
And then, and then once you reach, now you've got more cap. We're, we're allowed so much, what they call cap, for each municipality. Under that cap, it's $47 per ton. They've just increased through the contract that you just signed. The last town council is now, gosh, what was it, $87, I believe? That's how much it's gone up. So anything that is not recycled, going over that cap, even through the municipality, you're now paying $87 a ton.
Because we don't have enough recycling to bring them?
So we want, oh my goodness. I mean, I would love it if everybody was, had to. But that, at that point, DEM would then be required to step in and make that.
This is why I'm always in favor if a constituent reaches out to me, which hasn't been often where they ask me, can I have an extra recycling bin? I think we shouldn't charge them for the recycling bin, because even though it's a 175.
It'd be great. Yeah. Unfortunately, they are expensive, but that's, we work on grants.
I understand that. But in the long run.
Right. It would be benefit.
If somebody's like, if somebody recycles that often and they want an extra bin.
Right. Absolutely. Because we'd rather have, we'd rather go over tons and tons and tons in recycling, which we pay zero to tip, to dump, rather, to dump, rather than that extra solid waste.
Assuming it's not contaminated.
Assuming it's not.
But usually, when somebody wants an extra recycling bin, it's the people that are like OCD about making sure.
They're like on that and doing what they're supposed to do. Yep. So.
Because otherwise, the other people just toss it in the garbage.
Yes. So I just wanted to point that out. That's one of the reasons why we discuss that.
Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Jay?
Yeah. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Maria, before you continue, can I, I'd like to close the executive session. Under section 42-46-4 and 42-46-5 A2 of Rhode Island General Laws, the town council will close the executives, executive session that discussed the International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local 312 in collective bargaining agreement. The collective bargaining agreement with Local 1104 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO. And the collective bargaining agreement with the RI Council 94, AFSMI, AFL-CIO, West Warwick Town Employees Local 2045. And the second item, understa, that I'm going to close, is a meeting that discussed the job performance of the town clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolution creating a technology committee sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico?
Move the resolution?
A second.
Moving second. Discussion?
So, basically, back in, say, 2004, 2005, Councilman Giroux formed a technology committee. Apparently, it was not a formal resolution. And so the current committee in its capacity is not really legitimate.
The background to it, remember this, is that back in 1995, council passed a resolution 95-248 that said committees have to be set up by council resolution. And in very general terms, said that they gotta, you gotta name the purpose of the committee and whether it's going to be permanent, whether it's going to be for a period of time, and how the membership should be created. In 2004, Edger Councilman Giroux decided the town should have a technology committee. He put it on an agenda, and then he said, put it down for a hearing. And the meeting that he set up for the agenda, he said that he would work with and come up with a resolution for the committee. Unfortunately, what happened was in May of 2004, council resolution 2004-100 appointed a committee, appointed members to a committee, but they never created the committee. So earlier this year, I received a, in the, in the resolution of 1995, it says that the committees have to have bylaws. Earlier this year, I received a communication from the technology committee requesting that I take a look at the bylaws. When I went to look for the creation of the committee as to what it was supposed to do, I found it had never been created. So I had lengthy discussions with John and with the committee people. And all that I'm doing here is, oh, and then in 2018, beginning of this year, this council appointed committee members to that committee that didn't exist. So all I've done here is I'm bringing the first resolution is in line with the 1995 resolution, creating the committee and in general terms, spelling out its functions, how many members, the terms and what have you, the term of the committee. The next item on the agenda is just reappointing the people that were appointed back in 2018, 2019. So I'm just saying, this is just here tonight to legitimize the committee that unfortunately, in 2004, wasn't done.
I think the last time they met was 2004.
Well, this new committee appears to be active.
They haven't, have they met recently?
No, I stopped it.
There was an agenda.
They haven't met since I've been on the council.
No, no, no. We stopped because when we found off this information, obviously, not going forward. But there, there had been a couple of meetings, but nothing was.
Jason, they, they contacted me on the bylaws, and they wanted to get going on it. And I was the one who suggested to John that, no, don't, don't go holding any meetings, because then, then you'll, anything they do could lead to a question of you not a valid committee. But they, I got the impression they were very anxious to get going.
Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolution appointing members to the technology committee sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second.
So do we just move these five names together, or do they have to be moved?
Well, you, you, these have been named, and I've, I've suggested it be a, reappointing them for their specific terms. Keith Lee, and this is what I discussed with you, John. Keith Lee to a term to expire May 31st, 2022. Justin Stanley to a term to expire May 31st, 2022. Alanay Gomez to a term expire May 31st, 2022. John Battella to a term to expire May 31st, 2021. And Mark Knott to a term to expire May 31st, 2021. And thereafter, they're three-year terms.
So I'd suggest move all five names.
Alright. Do I need to list, like, go through them again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you, before you do that, have they filled out a, have they gone through the new process that we've?
No, not the new process.
This is a reappointment.
This is, this is appointments that already happened, that they're already in place. Their appointment's not up. So the question is, what do you do at that point?
These are all very qualified people.
I'm not, you know, I'm not saying the qualifications or the names.
The director.
I'm looking at the process that we've just put in place.
Well, I, I think, I think this is sort of an exception to that, only because they had been appointed.
Although, but, but we haven't, there's been a few people on a few boards that we haven't reappointed, because we were waiting two though. There was been a few. So maybe we should make them fill it out, and then we put it back on the next agenda, which is next week. We could, we could do it then.
I'm not disputing any of the names. I'm just making sure we're going through the right process, where we're not going to be called on.
I would move that we table it then.
A second.
Table to wait. Next meeting. Thank you.
Resolution approving medical stop-loss insurance for the Town of West Warwick and West Warwick Public Schools.
I'll move the resolution.
A second.
Moving second. Discussion? Kristin?
Hi. This, this is just in the normal process of the, of our health insurance. It's an extra layer of protection that protects us from high claims. Blue Cross bids it out, and Blue Cross got the, had the better rate and the better protection. So we're just putting forward the contract for your approval.
So they were the lowest rate?
Yes.
And, and you, proposal one is what was chosen on, sent to us?
Yes. That, the other benefit to Blue Cross over the HCC is that they have the advanced, the advanced refunding, I believe it is. So with HCC, if we had a high-cost claim, we would have to pay the $1 million. With Blue Cross, we would not have to pay it out in advance and wait for reimbursement. So Blue Cross definitely offered us for the rate, the best, the best protection.
So the, the administration fee stays the same, but the, because of our experience, it went up?
Just a tad. Yes.
Something like that. Okay.
Any questions for Kristin? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Bid award, three-year audit FY 19, 20, 21 resolved with the town council. Hereby approves the bid award to Bloom Shapiro in the amount of $260,765, subject to the approval of the Auditor General and required by Rhode Island General Law 45-10-4.
So as required. Nope, sorry.
Move the resolution.
A second.
Kristin?
So as required by Rhode Island General Law 45-10-4, by the Auditor General's office, we are required to go out to bid for auditors every three years. So this was our time to do that. We did, and we got two bids, our current Markham and Bloom Shapiro. So very slight difference in price. Bloom was by about $1,700 cheaper. They offer a fresh set of eyes. And we are recommending that we award Bloom Shapiro the audit bid for three years.
Do you want to comment on that?
You know, we've had Markham for six years. And it is good practice to change.
Well, you know, we've had Markham for six years, and it is good practice to change up auditors every so often, so clearly, you know, six years is a fairly long, you know, long-term. So, again, as Kristin said, a new set of eyes coming in, looking at it, and you know, I believe that, you know, Markham could have done a better job, you know, for the town in their auditing as far as making indications and notifications to, to the council as, you know, as auditors, and what they were saying, so. That, plus the fact that they've had it for six years, and again, it's, uh, Bloom Shapiro is a, a quality firm. Kristin checked out some of their clients, and they're, and they're satisfied, so, you know, those were the primary reasons that we feel is changed necessary.
That being said, it's probably important to note that the change is not being made. We've not had any adverse opinions. There's not been any issues that we had with the auditors.
No.
No. Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Fiscal year two thousand, two thousand nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget for the Civic Center Complex resolved that the attached, is adopted as the Civic Center Complex budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty, in the amount of seven hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars for operations, maintenance, and debt service.
Move the resolution.
My second. Moving second, Kristin?
So, this is the budget we had our two workshops on, and we are putting it forward for approval.
Any comment from the council?
Actually, so, I am, I'm actually going to vote for this. It is a balanced budget. I have to point out that as we stand in two thousand and nineteen budget, we are going to have a hundred and nine, we're projected to have a hundred and nine thousand dollar deficit. I am leery, I, I want the council to reserve the right to go back and adjust this budget as necessary. Again, they've presented a balanced budget, they've given us the backup for it. I'm suspect that, that we will actually get to those numbers based on what we've done this year. I've been given explanations as to how and why that might happen, but I think there will have to be changes in how that, that basis run, and again, I, I think a very good job was done in presenting it based on what facts they had, but I am not a hundred percent convinced we will get to the revenue, uh, the revenue numbers that are presented here. So, it is important to know people, and people understand that we're projected to have a hundred and nine thousand dollar deficit at the Civic Center this year.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none?
I, I
Jay?
I think, last I knew, it was ninety-six for, um, to be in a deficit. That's a pretty big jump, you know, for a few months. Um, I think we need to do some type of change there. I don't know what it is right now, but I think we need to be active in looking into it. I'm not for increasing, I'm not for this budget, and, and the reason is, we're a hundred and nine now this year. We've actually, our expenses went up by fifty thousand dollars that we're asking to approve for this year's budget. So, if we can't, if we're behind by one oh-nine, and we need to meet fifty thousand dollars more in expenses, I don't see how we're gonna get that.
I think last year, I mean, the ice rink was closed for a long time last year.
And also, we-
That's one oh-nine, just, I'm not, just say it's plus fifty. Numbers may be off. That's one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars we're gonna have to generate. Based on the staffing patterns we have, it, it's just, I don't think it's realistic.
How much did we lose last year when the ice rink was going, just around ballpark number?
It was closed from March till August. So, I mean, you look at every, even if you just only had nighttime rentals, I mean, it's two hundred and twenty dollars an hour right there. You know, even if you were only five to nine, Monday through Friday.
Hundred and-
I mean, you're, you're looking, that's, that's your difference right there.
That's a hundred and fifty-
That's your summertime rental will be your difference that you will see this year.
And, and those spreadsheets were provided to us with, with the, the scheduling. Again, I just think we need to keep an eye on it, and-
And, and again, I said it through both workshops, it is a very, very tight budget, and it needs to be filed to the T in order for it to work. I mean, if you throw obstacles in front of me, I'm gonna try and get over those obstacles, but, I mean, there's only so much that I can do. I mean, there's contracts, there's all sorts of things that I have to take into consideration when I'm doing all of this. So, yes, at this point, we are booking to its full potential.
So, I'm s- I'm just not convinced, I just think we're just gonna go deeper.
I mean, when you throw something for five months, I mean, it's only twenty thousand dollars a month. I mean, two hundred and twenty dollars an hour goes pretty fast.
Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
April two thousand and nineteen monthly finance report.
Current year tax collections to date total fifty-seven million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents, which is ninety-one point two eight percent of the budget for current year taxes. Collections are on target for ten months into the fiscal year. Prior tax collections are, to date, are up to one point two, one million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-one cents, which is equal to seventy-two point seven, two percent of the budgeted amount. I do see that number rising, and it's, it, it will, I believe, in the end, come close to, to what I'm budgeting for fiscal year two thousand twenty. I always believed that that number should be about one point five million, not, but we've been bringing it down steadily. Overall revenues are at eighty-nine point two nine percent, which is higher than the expected amount at ten months into the fiscal year. And please note that April department revenues are not in that, because it, they usually get booked at the latter half of May, when, and I do my reports earlier than that. And also, there was a lot of banks and payments that weren't processed yet when I did these reports, so the revenue numbers are actually a lot higher. As always, I prepare the summary of departments for a quick view, and all the operating departments are operating within five percent of their adopted budgets, with the exception of Board of Canvassers, Planning, and Human Resources, which were explained in prior months. I did want, I did a little analysis, too, because I know we're always focusing on overtime, and I was looking at the police budget, and, you know, kind of projecting out where they're gonna land, and when I took a sum of all of their salary-related items, including overtime, including, you know, what they're gonna go over in overtime, they're actually gonna come over, under budget as a whole, and I, I thought that, you know, that's, it's a good way to manage your budget, just, even though you're still coming over in overtime. In other areas, you're coming under, and you're still coming under in salaries as a whole. And the fire department, I looked at that as well. They're a little bit, little bit, little bit higher, but, you know, in the same boat. So, it, it, I do believe that they're, they're managing the departments very well.
Any questions for Kristin? Thank you, Kristin. Thank you.
Town council acting as liquor commission. New class B vic liquor license resolved at the following application for a class BV liquor license having advertised in accordance with law for hearing on this date. No remonstrance or objectors present. The same is hereby approved. Suven LLC, DBA, Masala, Pakistani, and Indian Cuisine, thirty-five, Quaker Land, Unit One.
Move the resolution.
My second. Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Minutes of the previous meeting resolved that the minutes of the April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen town council meeting are hereby accepted.
I actually would like to make an amendment to those minutes.
Make a motion, move, and we can go into discussion. So, a motion to move the-
We'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, Carrie Beth?
Yes, there, there's an amendment that needs to be made on item H, fiscal year twenty twenty, proposed budget. The first sentence says, Finance Director Benoit reported that FY twenty budget for town is one hundred million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Revenue is not included, property taxes are thirty-three million, eight oh four two one one, and I wish this were the case, but property taxes are six hundred and seventy-one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. I believe that's a typo, and it should be sixty-seven million, one 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 three oh four.
So, if we can make sure we have that amended, please. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agenda, license application resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Recuse myself.
Councilman Messi is recusing himself.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Any discussion on licenses? Any public discussion on licenses? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. If you care for a license pending police, fire, and taxes, it's been approved.
Course respondents, consent agenda, resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Cancellation of taxes. Resolved that the attached cancellation in the amount of two thousand and twelve dollars, seventy-seven cents, presented to the tax assessor for approval of the town council in accordance with Article twenty-five, Section five of the West Warwick Code of Ordinances, is hereby approved. Original list is on file in the office of the tax assessor.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolution authorizing supplemental appropriation to the pension plan of the town of West Warwick sponsored by the town council.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion?
Bernie?
Yes, this is a follow-up to our meeting last week, and, again, by, by way of background, the, in reviewing the audit, I believe it was discovered that, or brought to our attention, that in FY fiscal year, June nineteen fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen, there were slight shortfalls in the required contribution of the town in the pension plan to what the actual contribution was. In FY fifteen, the town funded the required contribution ninety-nine point four eight percent. In sixteen, the town funded the contribution ninety-eight point four three percent. And in eighteen, the town, the town funded the contribution ninety-nine point eight nine percent. The FY fifteen and sixteen contributions were short. Fifteen was forty-one thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Sixteen was one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And looking back, discussing this with our actuaries, there was a timing issue where the actual reports final were after the adopted budgets, and there was a slight difference, and there was no adjustment made. The FY eighteen budget, there was a shortfall of nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and that was made up in our current fiscal year budget, because it was a small amount. So, what the proposal is, is to go to our undesignated fund balance, which is currently nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, five, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, and transfer the amount that was underfunded in FY fifteen, sixteen, to one seventy-one, three thirty-one, into the pension plan. So, we'll be taking, by resolution, from the undesignated fund balance, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, and transferring it this year into the pension plan. So, this year, the ARC will be over, you know, a hundred percent, but it's to make up for those two fiscal years. And again, our revenue, our revenues over expenses, the current fiscal year is trending, you know, at least you know, five, between five and six hundred thousand dollars at this point, above revenues over expenses, so, in effect, if the, if that holds true, we would still be making this payment and replenishing, we're making the payment of one seventy-one, and we'll be replenishing the fund balance by, you know, five to six hundred thousand, so there'll be a net increase at the end of this fiscal year. And again, this was, uh, discussed and brought to attention, I think, in February, and with the discussions with the council, again, there was an obligation of the town to make the payment, and and once that was learned and determined, you know, the, the council wants to make it on those commitments, and again, I know I speak for this council, that ARCs will never be underfunded. It'll be, always be a hundred percent, so, again, that's what this resolution does. Any questions from the council?
I would just like to point out, though, and you did say it, that you're covering two years. The two thousand and eighteen shortfall will be covered in this year's current budget, so it doesn't need to come out of-
Correct.
The fund balance.
It was a small amount, yes.
I think it's ninety-seven. Ninety-seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Yep. Any other comment on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Renewal Energy Professional Services Agreement resolved that the town council approves the professional services agreement by and between the town of West Warwick and Green Development LLC.
Move the resolution.
My second. Moving second, Kristin?
So, with these wind turbines, we've, we've been missing out on a lot of opportunities to make some revenue to help with our energy fund. We reached out to Green Development to see what they could do to help us, and they came up with this agreement where they would be managing our, they would be selling our excess credits, they would be reallocating our credits to the bills so that they're properly, so the bills are reflected properly. They'll be doing the net metering credit allocation, de- much more detailed monthly reports. The biggest thing is the sales, the REX and the transfers. They'll be generating close to maybe two hundred thousand a year in sales, which will benefit that, that energy fund immensely.
So, we, we had Julian, who is our representative, no longer, utilizing him.
Mm-hmm.
It's amazing how many electric bills I see in those days that the town actually has between, I think it was over fifty bills.
Yeah, we have a very long, what they call Schedule B, which, all the properties that are covered by the wind turbines.
Can I just ask a question? So, this is a three-year contract, it's ten thousand per turbine for the first year.
For the first year.
And then twenty thousand per turbine for the following two.
Correct.
So, the idea here is that Green Development is going to find additional credits, the REX, the transfers, all these things, and bring in a profit of like two hundred thousand dollars that we haven't been seeing. If they don't in the first year, do we have the ability to terminate this contract?
I do believe we are in a three-year contract. I don't believe we, we could terminate if they don't, but we already have a sale on the table for fifty thousand, so that's already going to pay for it if we sign it soon.
Where they would buy the-
Where we, she has a buy, they have a buyer for those, old two thousand and eighteen REX for fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. So, that would, that would cover the thirty, I'm sorry.
Um, we also, we already have, there's, part of the contract we have with, uh, Green Energy Alliance, where we sell REX to them quarterly on one of the turbines, but we haven't been selling the REX from the other two turbines. So, they would be managing those and brokering the deals. It's, it's a commodities trading.
Do you feel confident that we'll see that type of-
I, I, I believe, yes, I have, um-
Just keep in mind that two thousand-
Just turn off the mic.
The, um, two thousand and eighteen REX.
Just teach your name.
Tara Penisi. So, your two thousand and eighteen REX that your other two turbines generated are actually sitting on a GIS account for you, and you have so many REX, Rhode Island State REX.
Are you still able to sell those?
Yes, but only until June first.
Okay.
Otherwise, they, they go into the market and they disappear. We're very lucky that that sale is even still eligible.
June first of the next few days.
Correct, so we need to execute this.
Yes.
Is that realistic?
We can still sell your two thousand and nineteen's. Yes, I have a trader right now, I have paperwork for you. We can probably do this. I can go back and call him tomorrow if this was something you're interested in. And that's for your two turbines, and then we would immediately facilitate the two thousand and nineteen REX and forward. You get a higher price when you do a forward trade. So, for your two thousand and eighteen REX, we're actually getting a little less than if we had previously sold them.
So, it's needless to say, the person who was managing this beforehand is no longer with-
No, you're, and that's one of the things about these turbines, they can be a revenue driver if we do it right. And for Green Development, we would touch none of your money. I would facilitate the sale and then tell your finance director to invoice the company. So, no money is exchanged for me and my company. But you have your renewable energy REX that you can sell, but you also have an overaccumulation of net metering credits that you can sell to other towns and universities. So, you have a few opportunities to make some money. So you have a few opportunities to make some money off these turbines that we just haven't taken advantage of.
Okay, thank you.
And each year it will bring, bring in enough money to cover what you're, you're going to charge us.
That's the goal and hopefully a lot more.
It's definitely the goal.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Fire department personal protective equipment resolved with the town council hereby approves the purchase of ten sets of firefighter personal protective equipment at two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars per set for a total of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to be paid from FY eighteen, nineteen approved budget account one dash twelve, ten dash fifty-three oh three turnout gear.
Move resolution.
My second. Chief?
Yep, so this is to replace gear in two thousand and ten, the town received a grant and that gear has a ten-year shelf life. It will expire in December of two thousand and twenty so that we don't have to buy, we have twenty-three sets of that gear that is still in active frontline use right now so that we don't have to buy twenty-three sets next year. We're trying to get ten sets this year and, and complete the purchase next year. So that's what this is.
Any questions for the chief?
Chief, what happens when the, the turnout gear is, is not usable anymore?
Right, we have, we're supposed to cut it up and dispose of it.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Discussion action. One update, Pat's Towing sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Recuse myself.
I just need an update from the tax collector and solicitor, where we stand.
Mister President, I think I can give an update. The tax collector and myself met with four representatives of the Raimondo family last week. We should have a draft document to them probably by tomorrow, but no later than Thursday and believe we'll be ready for presentation next Tuesday at the council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Two update, Pete Cottrell property sponsored by Council President Goslin.
All right, about a month, month and a half ago, I sent an email to the town manager, TBW director, Elaine CBDG, who was in charge of the grants, and Mark Carullo and Councilman Messier in discussion. And obviously Pete's been to numerous council meetings to discuss his property. I think all of us have visited the property individually, but not collectively as a group. So I just want an update on Pete Cottrell's property, where he stands, where he stands on his liking of the property and what the council needs to do if they need to do it. I know one of my responses was bringing in, because he's, he was already promised five abrevieties from Cardi or whoever it may have been. And from what I saw, I recommended twelve to sixteen. And we kept going back, back and forth on email and discussion, but it wasn't, no resolution ever came. So I don't know if he's gotten abrevieties, I don't know anything, so if we can get an update on what's going on with his property.
I believe I've been speaking with, Pete's coming up, but I've been talking to Dave yesterday or the day before when me and Dave talked, I think they were put in, but Pete can.
Good evening, Councilors, Pete Cottrell, twenty-five, New Wiki Street. Yes, Freddie and three other employees dropped them off. I put them in. So there's, there's the five. And I'm assuming that you're to come up with a vote for the remaining.
Well, I want to talk about what's remaining. I know there's a sentimental tree that's remaining.
That is correct.
And possibly adding more abrevieties, but that's
Correct.
You know, I know you called me about a flagpole, so you know, there's so many different things that we need to discuss.
Correct.
And the council needs to discuss because I'm not sure what needs to be done and what's left to be done on your property.
Is fire, well, the only thing that's left is the abrevieties that you and I spoke. I've done pretty much everything myself. The sentimental tree, which Councilman Messier fought for, that's in writing from the town manager. The only thing that I have with that tree is I was told by Mister Pacozzi and along with other people that I can't put a tree in that easement or within fifteen feet of that pipe. So this tree that we're going to get into conversation about, where am I supposed to put it? So what I, what I spoke to you with about David was, is I'd like to build my wife some kind of memorial, or not a memorial, a place where she can sit with a flagpole. It can either be cemented in or it can be, it's, it's, all it is, it's a piece of PVC pipe that goes in the ground. You can either put cement around it or you can put beach sand, as long as the cylinder is firm in the ground and it will hold the pole. It will not impinge on the easement that runs through my property.
Are you looking at in place of the tree?
Yes.
So it's
That's the flag, the whole thing, because, what did I give it to? I gave it to Freddie and Mister Pacozzi. I gave the quote that I got from Hattoy's.
So you, you just received five abrevieties?
Correct.
From the town?
From Cardi's or the town.
All right, for the project, you received five abrevieties?
Correct.
You owe more abrevieties?
No, no. I was on site, I looked at the fence line and including the backyard to the front yard and I suggested twelve abrevieties in my email. And I even sent them quotes from two people, two local businesses right between Coventry and Warwick, both right over the line and said, these are, we're talking three hundred dollars to five hundred dollars to resolve Pete Cottrell's issues.
Now, is that, no, excuse me, David, is that three hundred dollars for remaining? Or because, I can tell you, I can tell you that the five that I bought on the back.
I just sent quotes that I received
Okay.
to the individuals. And actually, Mark and Elaine both replied back saying, where is this business? I showed them where the business was and, and Mark actually knew where the business was. And
Is that the one that's down there?
It's a great price. So again, that's where we left it. Now, I haven't heard anything, I didn't hear they're going to give you twelve abrevieties, I didn't hear anything back from anybody as far as giving you abrevieties.
Correct, you, you stated that to me.
The tree I did hear about, I heard it was ridiculously expensive, so
That is the quote that I got that where Mister Pacozzi had told me to, to go, that's where I went, that's the quote they gave me.
Well, one of the agreements we made in writing was to replace a similar type of tree, which was in a right-of-way, maybe four feet. The quote that came back was
Nine oh four.
Delivered and installed twelve to fourteen feet. It was a completely different tree than what was agreed upon or what we stated. And it was nine oh eight and there was a, I believe, a delivery charge as well. Clearly, it was not something that administratively we agreed to. It was a similar sized tree, small tree, four feet and it had to be planted, and it had to be planted within Pete's property, not a town right-of-way sidewalk area. So what came back was something was much more extensive than what was there.
Where, where are you getting a four-foot tree, Mr. Zamanski? Where?
The, the tree that was replaced, it was not for, it was on the town right-of-way, it was a small four-foot tree bush, whatever you want to call it.
It was a northern red cedar. I have pictures of it going through the shredder. It was, it was much bigger. Now, to determine the size of this tree, the caliber of the stump, the stump is still present. I measured it, it's seven inches. So you tell me that a four-foot tree, three to four-foot tree has a seven-inch stump? It does not. There's a ratio. Is a landscaper here that, that can give you the ratio? It's not. That was, it, it, David and I walked across the street, did we not? In the brown house, that's for sale. Did I or did I not say to you, that is the same tree, mine was smaller? How big was that tree? I have a picture of that tree. The tree that, the tree that was
Do you have the picture with you, Pete?
Of the, which one?
The tree?
Across the street from me?
Of your tree, your tree.
Going through the shredder?
No, your tree that got, that got taken out.
I have a picture of it going through the shredder.
No, your sentimental tree that you said was very important to you.
That is correct.
Is there a picture of that tree?
Not
Because I've had three to four staff tell me that what was talked about was a, a four-foot tree that was in the town right-of-way outside of your property.
That tree was not three to four feet? After the October meeting, Mister Pacozzi and the town planner walked out the, the following day and missed, both of them, there was the tree. Councilman Messier has parked outside where that tree is several times during the course of the Wednesday meetings and he's parked at that tree.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you how, how tall the tree was. I mean, I don't have, I don't have a picture of it, so.
I have, I can too, so go ahead.
I'll, I'll start from the beginning. When this job was planned, you had a public meeting on it. All the vegetation on that right-of-way was to be removed and disposed, okay? When we got there, there were five abrevieties planted, not on Mister Cottrell's property, but on the adjacent property. Apparently, they belonged to Mister Cottrell. At the time, there was a little dispute, I guess, on where the property line was. We asked him to remove them because we were going to be coming through. He did. He removed them, got them out of the way. The job, the job got delayed and he planted them back in again. When the job started back up again, they were removed again, put to the side. The bushes didn't make it, they died. We agreed to replace those five bushes, which we have. As far as I'm concerned, the job is done, the fence is up, Mister Cottrell's property is better than we, it's left better than it was when we got there. As far as the tree, I do have a picture with me. It's about a three-inch caliber tree, about four foot high. I have it right here. It was on town property outside Mister Cottrell's fence. The tree was removed accidentally. We said we would replace the tree in kind. Go get an estimate on the tree. Came back with a fourteen-foot tree, thousand dollars. Not exactly what we said to do and we did do that in writing, the town manager sent it out in writing. So as far as I'm concerned, we're still open to replace a similar type tree. We asked that it does not be planted on the easement. We have a drain pipe down there, brand-new drain pipe. The whole reason we keep an easement is to maintain that drain pipe. We've already allowed a fence to be put over that drain pipe. That could be easily removed if we have a problem with the pipe. You start to plant abreviation, the length of that pipe, we'll be in the same situation when something goes wrong with that pipe. We'll be removing that abreviation, they'll be dying, you'll be buying new ones. That's why we have drainage easements. We really should not be planting anything else on that easement. We are open to still, I think the only thing we need to do now to make Mister Cottrell whole is to settle this business on the tree.
Can I show you?
Well, you no longer want the tree, you want a flagpole?
Well
Holder, something?
Mister Pacozzi just, previously, we, we talked, I can't put anything fifteen, a tree, meaning it's, the root system grows down, whereas an abreviation does not grow down. It grows
I'll teach that by Mister Pacozzi.
Four feet.
Okay, abrevieties is a two-foot root base. I've done a lot of research on abrevieties and I don't even know why, but I have because I was told that we shouldn't be planting abrevieties on a drainage easement and we did it, we, we've done it for Mister Blair. We took one out, put it right over the top of the pipe.
Took two out and those are twenty feet tall.
And, and that, that rooting base is two feet, two, two and a half feet deep for an abreviation. So in, in my opinion, the other seven abrevieties should be put in through the back, for the backyard.
I put the five that Freddie and the other employees dropped off the other day on the backside.
So
So the driveway side is, is, still remains open.
That's just my opinion, but that's up to the council.
No, no.
I mean, for the, for the money, and I know everybody was not included on that email because I didn't want to start a rolling quorum or anything. It was just myself, Councilman Messier, which is his board and, you know, and again, the expense, and Pete, don't take this the wrong way, but for Mister Cottrell to go away on this matter in a year and a half or a year and a half of, that he had to deal with his property, I think two, three hundred dollars is well worth it.
May I approach Dave and show you the sentimental tree?
Dave, you have a picture too?
Yes, I can.
Show me yours.
So we can, we can
I seen the stump.
Okay.
No, but the actual tree. I want to see the tree.
That's the tree.
May I? We, we can, we can get into dueling trees. We can get into
That's the tree?
How, how
That is from Google Maps, right, correct?
It's bigger than four feet.
It's bigger, David, Mister Pacozzi, with all due respect.
See the stump, it's about a three-inch caliber.
Yeah.
I know the tree.
I mean, it's tough to tell, it's not a relationship to any
Do you want to walk to my house right now?
Okay, so, so
Dave, can I see that picture, please?
That's the stump.
So I can see it.
And he took that from Google.
Pete, there's nowhere else you could plant it on your property.
No, it's not, it's not. And here's
That's, that's good.
I want you to see the tree.
What was the flagpole called? I'm just asking.
That's the tree that you and I stood next to in my neighbor's yard.
What's, what was the quote of the original, the original four-foot tree? What's the quote of your, your flagpole that you were looking at, Pete?
I haven't, I know, I know the, the flagpole, I've looked at many.
Brown ballpark?
They go from anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and a half.
So you'd be all right with a flagpole instead of a tree? I want to clarify with this, what you're saying right here.
Well, I want to build, I believe I showed David
You didn't show me anything. You called me on it, you didn't show it.
I just want to show you the picture of my tree going through the shredder.
Pete, we're not going to worry about the tree anymore.
What do you mean we're not going to worry about it? This is what we're here for.
But I just said, you, you just said a minute ago that you, that you were considering a flagpole instead of a tree, correct?
I'm considering some kind of, of arrangement with cobblestone, mulch, some flowers, a flagpole. I was going to, I was asking for, I asked Dave, did I, did I, I believe I did, I asked David for the finances from the tree to do the monument for my wife.
I said, first of all, Pete, it's grant money, we can't hand somebody cash because they want, they want it. I told you this, absolutely ludicrous.
It's, it's really not, but
I can't, it's illegal. I can't give you, I can't give you grant money. Nobody in this
No, I understand, I'm very familiar with grants, Steve.
Giving you nine hundred and fifty dollars based upon the tree that you cut down and hand you nine hundred and fifty dollars out of grant money. You can't do it. I told you that on the phone.
So where, how, how do we resolve this? Because I graciously disagree with Mister Pacozzi as, as that tree.
Whether it's a four-foot tree, six-foot tree, eight-foot tree, I'm not concerned with that. It's up to the council now to decide whether or not they're going to comp, give you a tree and if they're going to give you more abrevieties.
So, so what is it, Mister Cottrell, that would, would, not that everybody gets their wish, what is it that would make you happy? It's been a long process.
Absolutely.
You have, you have been patient, we understand that. Winter happened. What is it that would make you happy to make, make this settle?
I would like the, the abrevieties that Councilman Goslin asked for.
Which is how many?
Seven.
Seven more, okay.
You're already going to buy.
And to replace, to replace the sentimental tree or allow some finances from somewhere to allow me to build, construct this monument in my yard. I think, I think, I, I think that someone owes
I would be for the seven abrevieties and a four-foot tree.
The four-foot tree is not, I'm not going to agree to the four-foot tree, Councilman.
Is that what it was, a four-foot tree?
You just said seven additional abrevieties to replace sentimental tree.
No, no, we don't.
No, I didn't.
Put it across the fence line, it's already there.
Seven, seven additional abreviation and the sentimental tree?
That is correct.
Versus you
Not a four-foot tree either, because
I'm just making sure we got seven abrevieties and one tree.
I understand.
That's where you're at. That's where you're at.
Because the tree, the, the, the picture that Mr. Pacozzi has is from Google Maps.
So, so the picture, all right, so the pic, the picture from, that Dave has is from Google Maps. You don't have a picture of how tall it was. I was there, I saw it, I never thought to measure the tree when I went out there.
I had it going, Councilman, I had it going through the shredder, with a six-foot guy like this.
A six-foot wrestling...
The tree into the shredder.
Pete, how, how was, how tall was the tree?
The tree was excess of ten feet tall. The, 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 the caliber of the stump is seven inches, seven inches. Multiply that by two...
What, what kind of tree was it again?
It was a Northern Red Cedar.
So, the, the question we have, he says you can't plant it anywhere on his property, so you're gonna give him a thousand-dollar tree, and he can't plant it, so...
So, so...
That's why I'm asking for, to, to build...
Could I, I, I mean, again, this, this has gone on far longer in furs than it needs to, and, and I don't know, I've not spoken to any of you about this.
This should've been worked out a long time ago, Councilman.
What's the legality with, with giving him something for the pole, then? Wouldn't that still go against giving him, I mean, how, how would that work?
No, he want, he wanted dollars, cash.
You can't give dollars.
Right. So I would re, I would, I would guess, I would make a motion, assuming, Mr. Cottrell, this satisfies you, we're done, to plant the seven abrevieties, and to give him a budget, a five hundred dollars, to do whatever you need to do, and we're done. That would be my recommendation, that's a motion that I would make.
Where's the five hundred dollars coming from?
Well, if you're gonna buy, if you're gonna buy a four-foot tree, even a four-foot tree's on the question, four, five hundred dollars. So, the question is, it, it feels settled for five hundred dollars plus the seven abrevieties, and it's, it's said and done.
Yes, absolutely, that, that would give me...
In writing.
Something to do for my wife.
In writing.
In wr, David, you and, and Mr. Williamson said to put this in writing a long time ago. If it was, I wouldn't be here.
The, the abrevieties cost...
Wait, wait, Mr. Salissa, wait, wait a minute, can, would we be allowed to do that?
Yes.
I don't know from what source or from what line item, you're going to pay a citizen five hundred dollars, for whatever the reason. So the question is, if part of his replacement was to be the seven abrevieties, whatever their expense is, plus installment, the five hundred...
I don't think the installment was a part of it, because you didn't...
Plus installment from, from who?
No, I don't, I don't think the installment was a part of it.
Listen, I don't know, that's what I'm trying to say. You can't give this constituent five hundred dollars, you'd have to have, you'd have to have work done.
That's correct. You have an invoice, you have an invoice, and you pay it, that's right.
So the town would have to hire someone...
No, no, I don't think we'd be, we, we weren't in charge. The abrevieties you put in, we brought them there, and you were, you put them in, correct?
I'm not talking about the abreviety.
I know, I understand.
The five hundred dollars in order to put up the sentimental, um...
Area.
Sitting place, area, whatever you wanna call it, how does the town propose to pay an independent contractor versus paying Mr. Cottrell?
I, I mean, this would be my suggestion, after it's done, you give us the invoice, we have it in writing beforehand, and we give, we, we pay, pay, reimburse you five hundred dollars towards it after you get it done.
I disagree. I disagree with putting the money out, out of my own pocket first.
Well, you need to, we, we can't give you cash upfront, we can't do that. That, that's, that's, that can't be done, so if you can get an invoice to us upon completion of, of work, I mean, a, a contract will take it.
It'll be in writing.
We can't give you cash.
I mean, they will reimburse you with the five hundred dollars, but, I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that's a fair compromise, yeah, we're agreeing for this mon, we're giving, agreeing to give you five hundred dollars, the seven abrevieties. I was in favor of the five, David was in favor of seven more, to make it go away, seven more abrevieties, but, that means dropping them off to you, just like you planted the last five, you'll plant the next seven.
Correct. So, so let me get this right, or, would you, would you like to repeat it, Mr. Williamson? So, seven abrevieties...
Seven abrevieties delivered to you.
Correct.
You will install them at your expense.
Correct.
You will place them where you can place them, as long as you don't violate the easement.
I'm gonna put them along the fence line.
No, no, I'm just saying, whatever the agreement you have with Mr. Pacozzi, it's gotta be easement. As far as the five hundred dollars, you're gonna get a quote, or maybe three, I don't know how many you're gonna get.
How many am I supposed to get?
Well, that's up to you, as a big consumer.
Three quotes from, from...
It's whatever you wanna do, you don't have to...
Well, listen, you might, you might have a guy that comes in, everybody's fifteen hundred, seventeen hundred, two thousand, the town's gonna give you five hundred dollars towards that upon...
Because I was gonna do it myself.
Well, that's, that's, you're gonna run into trouble, because you're gonna be in violation of the bond stats, the cash can't be given to you, it just doesn't work that way. You're better off hiring someone, resentment of an invoice, again, whatever the expense is, the town has agreed to pay five hundred dollars towards that out of...
Okay.
How big were the abrevieties that you just received?
Five, four, five feet.
Pete, did you get them from the place that I pointed out? All right, timeout.
There comes the landscaper.
I'll pull up the five hundred, and I'll invoice it, and then you, then reimburse me when it comes to it. That way I can invoice it.
Well, you're not gonna float it, you're gonna, he's gonna get an invoice from Reed's landscaping.
I think what you're saying, Reed landscaping is gonna do it. That's what you're telling me. That's what I think you're saying.
You have a tax card?
Correct.
Deal?
Deal.
Deal.
All right, good.
Thank you.
All right.
Right now, I have a motion to get seven abrevieties and up to five hundred dollars for the tree made by Councilwoman Williamson.
Not for the tree.
Five hundred dollars for flagpole.
Five hundred dollars.
For a memorial sentimental area, that's correct.
I'll say five hundred dollars.
And what's the timeframe with all this? Do we need to discuss that?
I mean, the, I mean...
Upon resentment of the invoice?
Yeah.
It'll be paid.
Yeah, we'll grab the seven abrevieties and drop them off. Should be very easy to do.
Yes.
What is the five hundred towards?
Five hundred is towards the sentimental, flagpole, sitting area, memorial area.
Oh, my God. Hold on, favor.
Aye.
I didn't get a second on that, Dave.
I second.
Oh, I, I, whatever, I guess.
Request from Attorney Carly Lefrake to address the town council.
Iafredi.
Iafredi, I'm sorry, there's a miss...
That was my first name.
Iafredi to address the town council on behalf of the West Warwick Public Employee Retirement Coalition, sponsored by the town manager.
Good evening.
Good evening. Carly, Iafredi on behalf of the West Warwick Retired Public Employees. First of all, this is gonna be a lot less painful than any discussion about trees, I promise you. Pension is always much more exciting than, than trees, right? Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening, it's been sort of a long time coming. I wanna confine my comments to three things. One, just a little bit of background, so you know who we are and why I'm here. Two, I wanted to address the pension funding, or the potential pension underfunding, and the third thing I wanted to discuss is the MERS migration. So, one, on the background, I'm a labor lawyer, and I've represented this group since its inception in about 2014. So, this is a group that was formed of retired town teachers, municipal employees, firefighters and police, all came together in 2014 when the town faced some fiscal distress.
By how many people?
Uh, ooh, such a good question, few hundred, about three hundred, I'm gonna say, someone's gonna correct me from the gallery, but I'm gonna tell them not to. All right, five.
Five, twelve.
Of course, um, about five hundred. So, it's a unique group in that it contains members from all of the constituencies, so sometimes you'll have retiree groups that are just police and fire, or just teachers, or just municipal, but this group is essentially, all of those constituencies come together, because at the time, the town was looking to cut everybody's, or change everybody's health insurance benefits, and cut potentially everybody who had a local pension. And I'm, I'm sure you know that as a result of the consent judgment that was entered into Kent County Superior Court, the, the ultimate deal was a change to the health insurance benefits for the retirees, and for the, those that were participants in the local plan, they suspended the COLA. So, since that time, what have we done? The idea was, we would pay attention now, right? Pay attention, and by paying attention, I mean, get involved in attending the pension board meetings, get involved in input into who was on the pension board, and criticize, you know, when the opportunity arose, because I think that's part of what happened years ago, is that people were not paying attention, oh, that's much better, uh, people were not paying attention when the funding was not being done properly. So, that's what led to the underfunding of the pension plan. So when we started, the pension plan was nineteen percent funded, um, which is really terrible, that's like Central Falls-level people potentially not getting pension benefits if one thing goes wrong with, with the town budget. So, anyway, the paying attention, paying attention to the investments, uh, who was investing the money and how it was being invested, and paying attention to the pension plan rewrite, which, as far as I know, is still ongoing, paying attention to the bleeding of the pension fund in terms of administrative costs, you have had at various times some of the highest administrative costs for a pension plan of this size, like crazy. And all of those things sort of came together to, to bring us to the point we are at now, which is the MERS migration. But before I say that, I wanted just a couple comments on the pension funding, since that came up earlier. When we originally asked for the opportunity to speak, it was about that first group that I was just saying, criticisms of the pension, uh, sort of board's handling of the fund. Then we received a copy of the audit, which showed that there potentially was some underfunding in some of the years. So that brought us to the, okay, we really need to get before the town council to make sure that you were aware of it. So I'm glad that, uh, somebody made you aware of it, I'm glad that the town council has addressed it through the resolution tonight. I, I still do have two criticisms, sorry. Uh, one is that when you just passed the resolution to address the two numbers for FY15 and FY16, which our organization, in case you're wondering, we agree that those are the numbers, but the problem is, is that typically what happens is, the actuary or somebody that does math, not me, would have gone back and figured out not just what wasn't put in, but what that money would've earned since that point in time. So it's not enough, and based on my limited experience with actuaries and pension plans, it is not enough to put in the one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, because you're not addressing how much that money would've earned since, if it was put in in FY15 and FY16. It may not be a tremendous amount, based on how the rest of the fund did, but I will tell you, just recently, like, for example, in Central Falls, with their local plan, they had a five hundred thousand dollar withdrawal last year, that was not supposed to happen. When they put it back, the actuary had to tell us, and when I say us, I mean the, the unions representing the affected members, uh, that they had done the actuarial analysis and told us what was missing in terms of earnings, and the money that went back in was with five hundred thousand and something. So that's one point that I would just like to raise, to put on your radar in terms of the perfect funding of this plan. The other thing that I wanna point out is, I heard, um, Mr. Town Manager say that there was also a shortfall in FY18, sorry, that's being addressed this budget year. When I looked at it, I, because of the audit, I ended up going through every year, and I basically looked at, what did the five-year plan call for, uh, what did the budget call for, what did we learn from town data, because under John Semino, he used to send us, uh, what the pension contributions were, that they actually went in, it was like a Citizens Bank, here's what went in, and then what was actually paid, so what did, what did the actual, um, documents from the town reflect? Um, I'm sorry, and I also didn't mention this, and, and what did the actuary call for? And in FY17, there were actually two separate arcs that were recommended, and the reason was, is one was in the FY15 report on an early basis, um, and the second one, second one came from the FY17 report. And just looking at this, and this is just an example, the town, um, did contribute more than, more than it had anticipated for the five-year plan, but less than what was budgeted. It was exactly what was recommended by Nihart in its first report, but it was a lot less than what Nihart recommended in its second report. So, my ask on that would be for FY17 and 18, that we can just have a further discussion about how we got to the fact that FY17, according to the town, was properly funded, and how it got to the number of what needed to go in for FY18, because my, going through the records, same thing, and this is no fun, nobody wants to do this, and I don't wanna do it. Um, but again, for FY18, the number that we came up with is different than the town's, because the arc that was recommended by Nihart in its report is different than the arc contained in the audit as being recommended. Those two numbers are not the same, and the arc in the Nihart report is higher than what is in the budget, with, what was in the audit, you know what I'm saying? So if they said it was nine point six million that was supposed to go in, but the audit said it was supposed to be nine point two, we figured out what we missed based on the nine point two, not by the nine point six. So, there may be some mistake, I don't know, but it's one of those things that I think it's important, it's important to my group, to make sure that we're staying on top of it, and that if we're gonna address unfunding, that we make sure it's addressed correctly now, and we don't face a problem five years from now.
Can you share your differences?
Oh, yeah, I have like, you know, the Carly Iafredi chart, which, you know, is just me going through the documents, but I'm happy to, happy to share it with the town. Um, I'll send it by email, um, to the town manager, if that makes sense. So that kind of brings us to the, why is the town still in the pension business at all? With a pension plan of this size, and the amount of work it takes to administer it, and the fact that it has grown only from nineteen percent to twenty-three percent, um, over the five years that I've been around, um, it seems to me that it's time for us to have a discussion about not being in the pension plan business anymore. And I know that some of you, and maybe all of you, are aware that the General Treasurer has met with our group, and with the actives, and with some of you folks, um, to talk about, a discussion about how to get the town into MERS. I'm sure everybody knows that you could go to MERS at any time by state law, um, as full MERS, and it would cost you X, okay, to go in, and from there on out, the town would not have to manage the plan, every year you'd send the ARC to, um, the treasurer, and that's essentially just a bill that you pay, and you're no longer involved in either the management of the fund, or the administration of the fund. You don't need a pension board anymore, you don't need to spend two hundred thousand dollars in administrative costs, and you don't need to spend, I, I don't even wanna know how much, rewriting a plan.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah, that's right. So, there's also another way, which is, if the town can't afford a hundred percent full MERS, which I don't think you can, um, is there sort of a, a graduated way in, or another way in, um, that we can all agree on? Something where perhaps the affected employees who are active, uh, agree to go in on a, a staged basis, you know, gradual basis, uh, retirees you can't do much with, you, you sort of have to pay them what you'd pay them now, um, but, there's definitely a way to do it, and we've had these meetings, and I think, at this point, what we're looking for is a more definitive commitment, not just a, you know, we'll come and we'll listen, but what we'd like to do is ask the council to form a committee of some kind, um, and appoint one of you folks to, to be in charge, and to have, uh, members appointed to that committee who are affected by a potential MERS migration, um, and that would be, obviously, your police, your fire, not your teachers, uh, your regular municipal, and then the retirees. Uh, in order to make some actual real progress towards it, I think it needs to be a more formal decision-making on the part of the town, as opposed to just, we kind of keep bothering you guys, and saying, hey, we wanna do this, and we keep asking the treasurer, but there's no way to move it forward. I will say, in Central Falls, we, we've made some progress, um, because we're working towards moving the police and fire plan, uh, to MERS, and one of the very first things that needed to be done, an actuary has to look at the plan and come up with some runs to be able to propose to the town. Under scenario one, the town cost would change this much, okay, the town can't afford that one. Under scenario two, you know, the town might be able to, but if the employees contribute more. All that work needs to be done by somebody, and if we had a committee, uh, that's, that's All that work needs to be done by somebody, and if we had a committee, uh, that's, that's where that can start, and in working in conjunction with the treasurer's, um, office. So, that's like my, my ask as part of the MERS migration, is just, um, to see some commitment by the town council to move towards that goal. And I'm just looking at my notes, because of course, I'm thinking, is there something that I wanted to mention? You know, obviously, that, the one other thing is, we're looking forward to the return of the COLA, but that's potentially part of what's gonna cause, you know, a problem for you folks. So, that's another thing, um, that's on the horizon, that maybe could be, you know, altered in terms of your responsibility if, if we went to the state system. Last comment is just about OPEB. I, I didn't look at the particulars, but that's, that's another thing on our list that we do try to pay attention to, and, and we understand the, the fiscal concerns of the town right now, and not being able to probably do as much as they can there, but you should know it's another thing we're, we're trying to watch.
Thank you, um, any questions?
No, you make some very valid points, all points that have been discussed. I think we do have to have a formal conversation, I don't think there's anyone sitting here that disagrees with that. We have had conversations, some of us individually with the treasurer, I know the town manager has met with the treasurer. People have to come together and work together to figure that out. And we have, pensions are very complicated.
Oh, yes, they are.
And it is expensive to maintain them and run them, and we don't have necessarily the wherewithal to do that.
We know we can't get the returns that the state gets.
Exactly.
Our advisors haven't been doing their job.
Well...
Expenses are getting expensive, um, attorney fees, you name it, I, you know, and even some employees who attended that meeting said to me, why, what, and, and I'll specifically say, some municipal employees brought it up to me and said, why would I want to go over to MERS? I'm like, well, think about it, you're paying in almost 13% now into your pension, the state is only requiring 9%, you give yourself a 4% increase in your pay, back in your pocket, and, and they didn't...
It's about security.
It's gotta be, you gotta educate the employee.
Yeah, it's about, it's about security, and until it's the day that you are told that your benefit may not be there, it's hard for you to grasp that it really isn't gonna be there. And I look at this, and I say, this is a town where it really might not be there. So, it's, when you're 23% funded, and you are struggling, you know, town-wide financially, no criticism, it's just a reality, um, you know, if you go to the state system, you can count on that pension check. And I know there's criticism because of what we went through with the state pension lawsuit and the changes that were made, but those were not about not having a benefit that you had already earned, not being paid, like in a bankruptcy scenario. That's about a, a change to your benefits, and I'm opposed to that too, but the point is, you'll, you'll have the benefit. You will get a pension check. So, anyway.
Ernie, how, when we, when we met with, regarding the pensions at the senior center, uh, was about a, about a month and a half ago, um, has any, has there been any discussion since then? Uh, any progress, um, anything since then?
No, there's been no affirmative action, uh, taken since that, uh, meeting, but again, there have been discussions, well, that I am not at liberty to discuss, based on what's going on. But, uh, you know, the issue is certainly, uh, understandable, and the aspect of security is, is important, but, uh, there are some, uh, discussions that I cannot elaborate on, based upon other factors.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you, Ernie, thank you.
Thank you.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Appeals Board, one alternate member with term to expire 10/21. West Warwick Public Library Trustees, four, three-year terms. Board of Tenant Affairs, one term to expire, two, 2021. Board of Assessment and Review, one, three-year term. Board of Canvassers and Registration, one, six-year term, and two alternate members for six-year terms. Kent County Water Authority, one, seven-year term. Recreation Committee, one full member. Pension Board Committee, one term to expire, 11/18/2020. West Warwick Patuxent River Authority, one, three-year term. West Warwick Planning Board, one term to expire, 7/2019. West Warwick Zoning Board of Review, one term to expire, 7/2019. Public comment, comment will only be addressed to the town council, who will take them under advisement. When addressing the town council, please state your name and address, please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of the citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested.
Falling apart. Anna Spodnik, Carpenter Court. Um, back in January and February, myself and another individual made a document that we forwarded to the Attorney General's office regarding problems with meetings, uh, with this council. And the Attorney General picked two items out of that, uh, particular document, and went forward with complaints. Now, just to give people a familiar explanation as to what happens when a complaint is filed against a town. The complaint goes to the town solicitor, who I assume notifies the town council and the town manager, and they have so many days to respond to both the Attorney General and to the person that filed the complaint. Now, these, uh, bits of information are supposed to be identical, and the reason I'm explaining this part will be clear in a moment. After a delay, um, these complaints were addressed. The first one was a document that did not basically address the complaint itself, it was full of errors, problems with dates, spelling errors, really very unprofessional. So, on the second part of this package, there was a cover letter, and when I turned the page to get to the next page in, in line, was a copy of my taxes, my property taxes, and a payment schedule. I don't owe anything to the town, but I immediately called the Attorney General's office, because I wanted to know, why was a copy, a full-color copy of my property tax, on the second page of a document that was responding to a Open Meetings Act, uh, complaint? And they informed me, after contacting the actual Attorney General, because the OMA Division doesn't know what to do with this, um, I was informed that it wasn't in their packet or their copy, which I then asked the Attorney General, what do I do from here? Because this didn't belong there, and there was no reason for it to be there, and there was absolutely no excuse whatsoever. Either it got placed in that document by accident, or it got placed in that document deliberately. Either way, what was a full-color copy of my property tax doing with the town solicitor while he was working on a complaint to respond to the town? I was instructed by the Attorney General's office, the proper procedures to go through, I was given, uh, opinions by people in the political world, that this was a form of possible intimidation, and the proper procedure took place, reports have been filed, and the document is considered contained as an evidence piece. And it's not gonna go any further, as long as nothing else happens. But I want this council to know, that that was in this document, and there was no reason for it to be there, and there's been no explanation as to why it was in there. So, if any of you have a reason as to why it was going to be in there, feel free to tell me.
No idea.
But if you're going to review your employees, such as your town clerk, you make sure you, you review everybody, because this didn't belong in there, you and I know that, and you didn't have an explanation for it, from what I understand. Why was my taxes in your office? Why was a copy of my taxes in your office? Why was it in the document mailed to my house? I didn't think I was gonna get an answer. Big crickets. Remember this, people, because the next time something happens, it's on file where it belongs, and it's not gonna stay right here, it's gonna go to the media.
Stan?
Stan Tabak, 12 Gendron Street. I shouldn't even be here tonight, I have, I have a walk in pneumonia, but I felt I had to come. I thought this was originally gonna be, uh, a workshop meeting after the budget, uh, but obviously, that's not what it is. I was quite shocked that the budget went down, and there's a lot of money that has to be made up, I don't know what you guys are gonna do. But one thing that I've been involved with over the years with the town, because I know we're looking for money, one of the biggest items of deficiency was in the healthcare, in the insurance, it was like nine hundred thousand in the paper. We have blindly been with the same broker for probably 25 to 30 years, going down the same path over and over and over again. I've met with the town manager sometime in the fall, or eight or nine months ago. I've introduced him to a company called Marsh McLennan, who's the largest broker of insurance in the country. They have a right, a very wide scope and access to all insurance carriers throughout the country. They're not just limited to Blue Cross, they're not just limited to United Health, they're not just limited to Tufts, they can bring in any carrier to help with negotiations. We've, we showed a proposal, and it's, it's probably outdated, it's outdated right now, but we had a drop, an overlay program, that we could use in conjunction with the existing program that's here right now, of savings of $400,000, just with the prescription drugs, which didn't go anywhere. You're looking for money, there was $400,000 just sitting there, and didn't have to really do much of anything. And it was an overlay program. There are many things that they can bring to the table. I mean, I just happened to be out of the room, when you had the stop-loss carrier in here, you just accepted a raise, an increase in that. I'm sure we could have, they could have cut that down. You just accepted it, because you only talked into one broker that's been here forever, I don't think they have the best interest in this town is. Anybody who knows me and my wife, I care about this town, I'm a taxpayer, and I think we're losing money unnecessarily, we're not looking at other options, and it's, just by looking at other carriers, there's at least a 10% decrease by doing that. We're not doing any comparisons, we're not doing any shopping around. I've been involved with this town, with this stuff for many years, we've actually been influential on lowering some of the costs of the administration over a long period of time. But I'm just tired of it, I just had, just, you know, I just sit back and I don't say anything, but I felt I had to speak up, because we're just letting money go out the window, and we could be doing much, much better.
Thank you, Stan. Any other public comment?
Yes, actually, I do. I would like to have two items added to the agenda, the next agenda, discussion action items. One would be a discussion with, uh, Mr. Curullo and the solicitor on Noon's Way, and where that stands, and the other would be on Hilltop Condos. So, if that could be added to the next agenda, I would appreciate it. And if Mr. Curullo and Mr. Williamson could give us some free history, it's not a rehash, it's a free history in what our obligation and how we move forward with these items.
Any other public discussion? Karen, you want?
Do you want me to just follow up on, um, the discussion action from last week about Kent County Water?
We'll put that on the next agenda.
Motion to adjourn, my second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The polls? How he's had?